Good evening. Welcome to this Candidates Forum for the Artsley School Board. My name is Susan Maggiato and I'm the President of the League of Women Voters of the River Towns. The forum is co-sponsored by the Artsley PTSA and we thank them for their participation. First, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the League of Women Voters. The League was founded in 1920, the year the 19th Amendment was passed granting women the right to vote. For over 100 years, the League has been a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation of citizens in government. This forum is a good example of that effort. As I said, the League is nonpartisan. We do not support or oppose candidates or political parties, but we do work to increase understanding of major public policy issues and we seek to influence public policy through education and advocacy. Membership in the League is open to anyone 16 years of age or older. This forum will be recorded and available for later viewing. There will be links on the River Towns League website and Facebook page and the school district website to the recording, the location on YouTube. A word about our recording policy that all the candidates have agreed to. Only entities authorized by the League may record or livestream this forum. Only licensed media, including TV, radio, and newspapers are entitled by FCC regulations to air portions of the recording. Anyone else who broadcasts or streams it must do so in its entirety. Now, I'd like to introduce our moderator. Susan Ferris is a resident of Bedford and a member of the League of Women Voters of Northeast Westchester. She moved to New York recently from New Jersey where she was a longtime League member serving as president for three terms. She also spent 35 years as a technology educator. And with that, I will turn the forum over to the moderator.
Great, thank you. My name is Susan Ferris. I'm here to be the moderator for the evening and in accordance with League policy, I just want to indicate that I am not a voter in your district. Before we get started, I'd like to go over a few of the ground rules. The order of opening statements has been determined to be reverse alphabetical order of the last names of the candidates. The order of closing statements will be the reverse of the opening statements. The order in which the candidates will respond to further questions will be rotated by me to assure fairness. Throughout the forum, we need to always remember that we're here for politics and not to talk about personalities. Each candidate will have up to 90, or one minute, actually I changed that, 90 seconds for their opening statement. They will then begin to answer a list of questions that I have for them to add. The timekeeper that we have is Lynn Levine and she's going to indicate to all the candidates when they have a 30-second time left and then again when the time is up, she'll put a stop sign up and then the candidates can stop talking. Each candidate will have an opportunity for a 30-second rebuttal at the conclusion of when each candidate has had an opportunity to answer each question. Okay, questions for the audience, from the audience were submitted prior to Candidates Night by email and electronic form. The audience is not going to be able to submit questions during the live event. At the conclusion of the question period, each candidate will give a closing statement of a maximum of one minute. As a moderator, I will reserve the right to allow rebuttal of the closing if warranted by the content of the closing statement. Rebutts will be given for 30 seconds. Okay, now we're going to proceed with the School Board Candidates Forum. We have three candidates for two positions for the Artsley School Board. In alphabetical order, I'd like you to begin to introduce yourself and we're going to start with Victoria. Go ahead.
Unmute yourself.
You need to unmute, please. Thanks.
Susan, quick question. How much time do they have for this, just the introduction?
For the, so for the opening statements, it's 90 seconds.
90 seconds.
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the PTA for sponsoring this forum. Susan for moderating, Lynn for giving the time, and thank you other candidates and all the members of the community for tuning in. So a few words about myself. My name is Victoria Peroter. My family has lived in Artsley for eight years. Daughter graduated from Artsley High School, is now sophomore in college and our son is a sophomore in Artsley High School. My husband is an active member of the Artsley Sequo volunteer ambulance corps and has served as a captain during the onset and because of the pandemic. I'm a member of the high school planning and performance leadership team, so known as BBLT, as well as a member of the Artsley School District DEI Committee. Professionally, I'm a doctor specializing in radiology at the Memorial Sloan-Kettering Cancer Center where I perform clinical work, conduct research, and teach, as well as direct and outpatient imaging center. I'm an active national and international educator with a passionate and a passionate advocate for equitable and rigorous education. I grew up in a small country of Moldova, came here at the age of 15 and completed two years of high school in Brooklyn. Graduated from bachelor's in biochemistry from SUNY Storybrooke, followed by MD and PhD degrees from the Albert Einstein College of Medicine. Although with undeniable record of achievement in this community, our community must adapt to rapidly evolving academic, technological, and social demands of the society. I'm running for the Board of Education because I believe there is a collaborative leader, strong believer in adherence to the highest academic standards, passionate educator, and results educated individual, oriented individual with a good pulse on issues the families are facing in all three schools and can effectively work with all stakeholders in the community to continue to maintain the district one of the best places to raise and educate our children.
Thank you. Okay. And next we have Rishi.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the PTA, the League of Women Voters, my fellow candidates, and all of the members of the community who are tuning in and have submitted questions. My name is Rishi Karthik Kain. My family has lived in the district for 14 years and I've worked during that time at the National Basketball Association, first as a lawyer and currently as the head of business strategy. I have two kids in Artsley Middle School, a sixth grader and an eighth grader. So the Artsley Schools are a central part of our daily lives. Previously served on the board from 2017 to 2020. There are three things that I would bring to the job. Number one, I'm a hard worker. I showed during my first term on the board that I will always do my homework and show up prepared. Number two, I'm a constructive problem solver. Even though I might have a point of view, I'm open-minded. I seek out different opinions and I work to build consensus. Number three, I'm a communicator. I know families are busy. It's easy to be overwhelmed by the volume of information that comes at them. So I think it's our job as leaders to make it easy for families to understand and have confidence in the decisions we're making that affect their lives and their children's. That's why I'm running for this position.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, and Frank?
I would also thank the League and the PTA for organizing this forum and for the work that they do in keeping the voters informed and engaged. I've served on your school board for 20 years. I believe that locally controlled public education is a uniquely American approach that must be supported and preserved. This belief has governed my outreach to other school districts. I serve on the Board of Westchester Button School Boards Association and the Board of the New York State School Boards Association. And I believe I am the only person from Artsley to ever serve on either of those positions. Our district is helped by my knowing what others are doing around the state and by communicating what our issues are to others. I've always, I have two children who went through our school system. I think they had a wonderful education and I continue working on this because I want your children to have a similar wonderful education. The state calls our district high wealth and I agree, but I don't think the wealth is what's necessarily just viewed from what's on the balance sheet. I view our principal assets as the the trust and involvement of our community, the aspirations of our learners, and the dedication and involvement of our staff. Those are the assets I've always worked to preserve. And that these assets have served us well during the pandemic and will continue to serve us as we move past this period. Make sure our learners are back on the best possible path.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm ready to start with the questions and we're going to start with Frank. You're going to be the first one to answer a question. Okay. So here's the question. I'm sorry?
One and a half minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Okay, I see what you're saying. Yep. Okay, first question is, what are your thoughts on the current and proposed budgets for the school district? What are your thoughts on the current and proposed budgets for the school district, starting with Frank?
I've worked hard on this budget. I support it. I'm not supposed to use distributed resources to promote the budget, but I hope that people can vote for it. And I have concerns about the future. The state is telling us that this will be a very good year for the state's revenues and the state's doing well that they could be nice to us. I have concerns. The state budget office and others are telling us next year is going to be a good year too. I wonder, because New York State more than most is dependent on the income tax and New York State's income tax receipts are very dependent on how Wall Street is doing. And I don't have 100% confidence that Wall Street's going to have a great year next year, but the state's telling us next year is going to be a good budget year too. So I support the budget and I try to view it as protecting. The budget is there to serve our district, to run the schools, to maintain our reserves and make sure that because we have the reserves, we can remain independent and strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And next would be Rishi.
So the budget is one of the areas where I think I had the most, my most significant impact during my prior term on the board. So before I joined the board in 2017, every year before that, we had proposed a tax levy that was at the maximum level allowed by law for a majority vote, even though those taxes were exceeding what we needed to fund our expenses. So when I came on to the board, I rolled up my sleeves. I wanted to learn everything that I could about the budget and we were able to find a way to ease the escalating tax burden on our families without compromising any programming and without jeopardizing our savings. The reason that we did that was because we started to look at the budget from multiple perspectives, not just the administrators who were proposing it, although we have outstanding administrators who are among the best in business, but we were looking at what families need, what teachers need. You know, families want to make sure that their schools are well-funded but that those dollars are getting into the classroom today. Families whose kids have graduated from the district, you know, want to preserve the reputation of Artsley as an attractive place to live, but to decide to move out of the district on their own terms and not because the cost of living was outpacing their ability to keep up. So we've made a lot of progress. You know, I commend Frank and my other board members for being receptive to my approach and I think we have a lot more work to do, but I'm well positioned to continue that work if I
Great. And Victoria?
So in contrast to the other two candidates, I would be a new member on the board. So I will first tell you what I think about the budget in general. I think the budget is really a numerical representation of our goals and things we want for the district. And it's a lot of decision-making before the actual number game comes in. I think that the current budget is actually a very competitive budget. I support the current budget because even given on the numbers and I commend the current board for coming up and supporting this budget as well because our per pupil spending in Artsley is nearly identical with the Hastings and Dobbs. So our River Towns are in par. And that's essentially the median value for all Westchester schools and the Potomac County. So we are on a good value for our education. And also given this year, we're actually below the median increase for the taxes while the other River Towns are increasing the taxes. And I'm really, so therefore I'm really in support of the current budget and I'm also in support of the strategy that the board has been undertaking in terms of passing small floating, floating small bonds. Because I think that's a very important aspect of it as opposed to passing large bonds like some other districts have done and burned themselves on. And if I get on the board, I will continue to, you know, to make sure that the budget corresponds to our priorities and objectives and goals and represents what families in this district are looking for to stay and to raise their families without minimal strain.
Thank you. Okay. Next question. On this one, we start with Rishi. And it is this question. What new ideas do you have in mind for the school board?
Sure. I have three priorities if I join the board. One is, like we just talked about, I want to make sure that Artsley remains a place that has a strong reputation for good schools, but also is affordable for middle-class families and for retirees. We've made great progress. I think we have more work to do. I'd like to continue doing that, including by reaching out to all of the stakeholders in our community and building consensus. Secondly, we've made a lot of inroads over the last couple of years around our diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. I think it's important for our schools to be a place that is safe, welcoming for all students, where they have an equal opportunity to be themselves and to succeed and to see themselves in the classrooms and discussions that they're having every day in our schools. And third, I think we need to lead with transparency and accountability so that parents can understand the work that we're doing. We can make it easy for them to find materials that we've prepared and we should make it easy for families to see and, you know, hear the decisions that we're making that affect their lives, including making our meetings, our materials visible through different, at different times of day to accommodate different working situations and including virtual when we need to. So those are all things that I prioritized during my original term on the board and I would continue those efforts.
Great, thank you. Okay, Victoria? What new ideas do you have in mind for the school board?
Okay, so I'm actually well-aligned with Rishi on all of the three of the priorities, maybe in a little bit of a different order, but essentially the same. I am an advocate for very clear and transparent communication. I think this is an area that needs to be improved in this district. I think that parents need to have a very clear pathway of communicating their concerns, sort of even like a, like point-by-point pathway where they know how to address an issue, how they're going to get response to the issue and whether, and whether this is going to be taken. And that goes to the goals of accountability and that goes to the goals of transparency. And that parents need to be involved in their children's education and I'm a great proponent of that. And our, as a board member, we should be liaisons between the parents and the administrations because if the parents are raising an issue and the parent is coming up to speak at a board meeting, something made that parent stand up and I think we should really value the input of the parents. In terms of the DEI, I've been on the DEI committee in the district, but also in the DEI committee in my organization. I'm a, you know, I'm very much involved in this Sloan-Kettering Center as well and I'm a very strong proponent of making sure that everyone can be their authentic selves, that we don't need to think about DEI in the very, in the ideal future, that a kid can walk in school and worry about school and not worry about being one person in school and the other person at home. And that's very, very important to me. And these are my current priorities.
Thank you. Okay, and Frank?
Okay, well, I've been on the board for a long time, which means I'm not here to change things from what I've been doing. I, I've welcomed the DEI. My personal history, I was present when Martin Luther King said his famous sentence. I was there in Washington. I was 14 years old. I went down there on train with neighbors. I view that as something central to what we should be doing. Everyone in the school should be safe, feel safe and feel welcome and feel important. And I, you, our district has has done fairly well on these things, but every now and then when I'm wondering if we should be focusing so much in DEI, I go to Instagram and look at the blog, Black at Artsley, and you know what? We have to, we have a lot of work to do. I, I hope that we can get back to running the schools the way we did pre-pandemic and life could become what we're accustomed to and that's what I'm working for during this term. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any rebuttals? No? Okay. Okay, next question and this time we're going to start with Victoria. There is overcrowding at Concord Road. What plans do you have to address it?
Okay, so Victoria? Okay, so the issue of overcrowding in the Concord Road is not the issue that came up for the first time this year. It's an ongoing issue and a very valid concern. And the reason that this is a valid concern is that because numerous studies have shown that the size of the classroom, especially in the early education, is directly related to the successful outcome further in the education pathway and in life. So I think we really should focus on figuring out a way to address it. I know we have acquired a property next to the Concord Road now a couple of years ago, I believe, and we haven't really realized that. Perhaps we can address what we're going to do with that property. And also to, in terms of thinking, we really need to think about the class size and perhaps focus our efforts on, you know, hiring additional staff because as I said, it's more important to give that, those children attention early on so that they're well set up for, you know, maybe larger classrooms in the future. But at the early on point, we really need to prioritize small classroom and that's why those discussions need to be held and, you know, taken care of eventually.
Okay, thank you. Frank, same question. There's overcrowding at Concord Road. What plans do you have to address it?
I don't, you conquer road is necessarily having overcrowding, a little more than ideal, but I agree that at some point in the future, we do have to expand Concord Road. That is why when the property came up that's next to Concord Road, I was all for acquiring it. I, what it does, it gives us flexibility. One of the state requirements is that when you have large, more students, you have to have more land and we need all kinds of waivers and that property helps us avoid that, makes the eventual expansion of Concord Road more feasible and doable. And it's the enrollment at Concord Road has not been expanding, but I personally believe it will start expanding again because we run wonderful schools and people want to come here and they should be able to come here. And we will eventually have to expand Concord Road. That is the answer. We've looked at other properties in the district and they're not really feasible. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And Rishi? There's overcrowding at Concord Road. What plans do you have to address it?
So I agree that the property that we acquired a couple of years ago and I was also on board when that happened, is a helpful tool in our toolkit. And so for those who don't have that context, a couple of years ago, a property that's uniquely situated adjacent to Concord Road was up for sale and we decided that in order to plan ahead for a potential expansion of our buildings, acquiring that property when, if and when we needed to restructure or expand a building on the Concord Road grounds, it gave us a tool in our toolkit to do that. I think that question of, you know, increasing crowding in our schools is a perfect example of how expanding our perspective and seeing things from a different point of view opened up new opportunities for us to address it. You know, the conversation that we often have is how, you know, because we have more people coming into the district, we need, you know, more revenue, higher taxes to fund that. When I was on the board, one of the questions we asked was, you know, is the increasing tax burden contributing to that? I think we've all seen the phenomenon of the yearbook photos of the graduating seniors going up on someone's lawn and the for sale sign goes up right next to it. So taking a smarter approach to our budget so that we can get our tax dollars into the classroom with the money that we're collecting today may actually make it more affordable for families whose students have graduated to remain in Artsley and to leave on their terms and on their time.
Thank you. Okay, any rebuttals? No? Okay. All right, next question and this time we start with Frank. What do you think is a significant challenge at the middle school and how would you address it? What do you think is a significant challenge at the middle school and how would you address it?
Middle school, I think I've always thought the challenges of the middle school and the primary challenges are what come under the rubric of social emotional learning. It's a difficult time and kids are changing and they're trying to figure out who they are. And I think our supports should be very strongly directed towards that. I look at the Concord Road and kids are eager to go there in the morning. I always joke, if you woke up your kid on Monday morning and said you can't go to Concord Road this week, they'd be upset with you. And it's largely true. And by middle and high school, that's changing. I'm not happy about that. But I also think that what we've done and what we have to work on more is in articulation so that the the Concord Road understands what the middle school expects the kids to know when they come. The middle school teachers have an understanding of what the kids coming from Concord Road should know. And the same transitions are in place for high school. And those are the middle school issues that I think about the most.
Thank you. Okay. Rishi, what do you think is a significant challenge at the middle school and how would you address it?
Sure. Well, I've had the privilege of being an Artsley middle school parent for the last four years. As I mentioned, I currently have two kids in that school. So I'm very familiar with the issues at that school. That said, I'm also not someone who assumes that my experience is universal. So, you know, I'm running to represent all families, but I'll tell you a couple of things that I've observed is that for some of our programming, whether it's curricular or extracurricular, you know, athletics, some of the after-school clubs and competitions, we've had a situation where I think we have more students who want to participate than we have the capacity to accommodate. Now, all things being equal, that's a great problem to have that you have, you know, more students who want to do more things. That said, it's still an issue that we need to address. We want to make sure that we have enough resources, that we have enough support, that we have enough rigor, that we have enough accountability to help every student reach their potential. Again, I'm running to represent all families of the district. I want to make sure we have the capacity and the programming to help every child do everything they want to do and reach their potential on their terms. So I think, like I said, we have constraints, but we also have a lot of talent and a lot of creativity. And I think we should, you know, pull our collective resources together to make sure that we're meeting every student.
Thank you. Okay, Victoria?
Okay, so I think that the issues in middle school are I really, basically the social emotional component is very, very important given, as Frank said, the time of the lives the kids go through middle school and that drastically changes for some, for most of the kids. And that's very, very important to be supportive at that time of their lives. But at the same time, we need to be aware that this has to be balanced with the curriculum rigor. And I think in our middle school, we can expose the kids to a little bit tougher curriculum and allow them to explore things in preparation for high school. Because what we need to also be cognizant of is that whenever they arrive to high school, they do not really have that much time before they start thinking about college. And college admissions and their future, you know, potentially is rapidly changes. And we have to be cognizant of the fact that even now, when we have, you know, when the colleges have gone with test optional, the kids are going to be judged based on the academic rigor of our curriculum and we really have to be cognizant of that and pay attention to that. And I think as early as in middle school and potentially exploring curriculum that we have in math and in social studies and languages to prepare kids better for high school and eventually for college. And lastly, I don't know if I have any more time. I also think that it's very important for kids in this age to have support, not only from the families, but also from their peers and their mentors. And I would involve the high school kids more in becoming mentors for these kids because nobody can really underestimate the value of mentorship of the peers and the guidance of the peers and the support of the peers and really a lot of personal involvement, you know, personal confidence.
Thank you. Thanks very much. That's okay. Thank you. Okay, next question, and this time we're gonna start with Rishi. And the question is this, what do you think is a significant challenge at the high school and how would you address it?
Well, like I said before, I don't have personal experience at the high school. That said, one of the things that I bring to this role is the ability to reach out and admit what I don't know, show the curiosity to, you know, talk to parents of different perspectives. I think it's with different perspectives who are experiencing, whether it's challenges in terms of diversity, inclusion, acceptance, challenges in terms of getting the academic rigor, the extracurricular options that they, that they receive. I think it's important to distinguish between things that may be outliers and things that may be, that, that, you know, maybe general common trends and themes. We're a diverse community. People have different perspectives, different experiences. I think what's important in addressing challenges in any of our schools is that we're actually talking to not just the people that agree with us, but we're actively seeking out opinions from the people who may disagree with us. So that we're making Artsley a place that is safe, welcoming, inclusive, and meets the potential of every student at every level.
Thank you. Okay. And Victoria, what do you think is a significant challenge at the high school and how would you address it?
Yeah, so my most recent experience is, of course, with high school for both of my children. And I think that we need to focus on several issues. I mean, there's probably not enough time to discuss it here. But I think that we need to be cognizant of the fact that kids need guidance. And I already spoke about the rigor of the academic curriculum and the issues connected with that, starting in middle school. And that has to be translated into the high school, into the, in the current environment. I think we need to invest more into guidance, and we've actually began doing that. And I think the hiring of the new staff really is proving to us that this was the right direction. And we need to continue in this direction of hiring people that are more aware of the current trends in the college admissions and where our children can end up. And this is all very tangible, short-term outcomes, because our kids do not have unlimited time in the district. They cannot wait for slow change. They need results and they need results promptly. And I think this is what we need to focus on. The social emotional component remains important because they're still in their teenage years and they still need to function with their social emotional skills, you know, improving and evolving. And yeah, I think these are the, the three main things that I could talk about now.
Thank you. Okay, and Frank? What do you think is a significant challenge at the high school?
I think it's something I've been working on almost since I got on the board. And it's the question, kids mature differently. And our paths, our curricular paths have to be flexible enough to accommodate kids who mature at different points. And I, it, it's more, it's almost across the system from Concord Road on, but it's a problem that exists at the high school, that, that has to be addressed at the high school too. Is I always would say, would say, especially in math, there's an express train and it leaves, and if you're still on the local, your chance of getting on that express later is very remote. And we've done a lot of work to make it less remote, to make it so so our, our learners have a chance to get into a more accelerated curriculum later, because that's how they grew up, and that's when they're ready for it. And those are, that's the core issue that I deal with, with curriculum at the high school. I love what we're doing with guidance. I'm sorry I can't be at the board meeting tomorrow, but there's gonna be a wonderful presentation on what we're doing on guidance. And I'd urge everyone to watch it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any rebuttals? We're good?
I think, I think I'll add a couple of words about the math curriculum. I think that we need to revisit the math curriculum, as it has been shown in the last couple, a few board meetings past. We have been actually steadily declining in the AP scores for A B calculus, and we really need to revisit the issues associated with that. And I think we have a board meeting scheduled, Frank, correct me if I'm wrong, to address this, but it really needs to be addressed in the very, very near future.
Okay, any other rebuttals? Okay. Okay, next question. This one is gonna start with Victoria. What do you think? Oh, okay, wait, no, we're not gonna do that. Okay. The board has discussed the veterans' tax exemption and has not supported it. Would you support it? Why or why not?
So, in all honesty, you know, I don't know the details of the federal tax exemption. I know that these are members of our community that also pay taxes, that have served our country and that have, you know, contributed greatly to where we stand today, where our children are gonna go tomorrow. And, you know, I'm a, you know, lifelong learner, and I would definitely get on this issue if I was on board and understand why there was a denial or why there was an approval. Or wasn't there an approval and what stands behind it? And I would really look for, you know, to substantiate any claims. And at this point, I'm just not qualified to substantiate that decision.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Frank?
Yes, I, I've wrestled with the veterans exemption. As it exists today, I have a lot of problems with it. It, it shifts a tax burden from some members of the community to others. My mate, and I accept that that happens. My major problem with it is that it was passed as part of what they call in Albany, the big ugly, which is a bill at the end of the session that has a lot of things thrown into last minute that are not carefully considered. Nobody consulted schools. And there are aspects of it that that bother me. One is when you do it, you can't undo it. It's a one-way streak. You've done it, you're done with it. The other thing is there's a provision that children of the veteran get an exemption if they live in the house. And frankly, I don't understand it. My father was a veteran. He didn't understand it. He said, no one shot a gun at you. Why didn't you get something? So I have issues with it. I haven't been for it, but I'm willing to discuss it. And it's not a core issue to me that, you know, I, it's what I'm about. And I, if it was modified, I could support it. And that's where I stand on it.
Okay, thank you. And Rishi?
I, so I do think it's an issue that merits additional study. It's not a simple issue as I've heard so far. I think it's important for us to live our values and, you know, respecting the contributions of our veterans is of course important and a priority for all of us. I think it's important to make sure that it goes to the people that it's intended to benefit. I think that having something that you can do and not undo is complicated. The issue of, you know, shifting taxes from one group of taxpayers to another sounds unpalatable. It's also something that we do, you know, all the time when we're putting money into reserves to spend later, when property values are reassessed and the distribution, you know, moves from one group to another. So I don't think it's a simple yes or no or good or bad question. I think it's, you know, worth looking, talking to people of different perspectives, finding creative solutions and working toward consensus. One of the things that I heard, I think in the meeting where the board discussed this, was that, you know, it's something that should be funded by the state instead of funded locally, which also sounds attractive until you consider the fact that, you know, we in Artsley are net contributors to the state's taxes. So having the state contribute or to, to fund that often means that we are funding the rest of the state as opposed to, you know, Albany funding us. So there's, there are layers of complexity and nuance, and I think we need to engage everybody in constructive dialogue to fund it.
Great, thank you. Okay, any? No, we're good. Okay. Next question. We're gonna start with Frank, and the question is this. What do you understand by diversity, equity, and inclusion? And how do you envision DEI work in our schools?
The basic premise is that everyone feels safe and everyone feels welcome. And that certain differences that our society has created are minimized. And that's really it. I think it involves a lot of additional self-awareness. I look at my own life and examine it. I've said things to people and afterwards I ask myself, how did I say that? Where was my head? And I think we all have to live our lives and examine ourselves. And diversity, equity, inclusion is to teach people how, how to examine their own actions. And it, it's not, there's, there's a concept out there that it's to make our children feel guilty. I will tell you it is absolutely not. And that's, no one wants to make children feel guilty. Feeling guilty is when you know something's wrong and you say, well, it's to my advantage, I'll let it stay wrong. But short of that, there's no reason for feeling any guilt about this. And I hope that we can make progress through the committee, and I hope they come to the board with something that I can truly support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and Rishi?
So first, I think it's important for us to make sure we take this conversation beyond, you know, social media or cable news slope. I think we have started a conversation in district and commend the district leaders for starting that conversation. That is a critical first step, but it is only a first step. We're ultimately gonna be judged by the families of the district, not by the conversations that we have, but the actions that we take and the progress that we make. We shouldn't confuse, you know, activity with progress. Progress means improvement, and it's something that can be measured with tangible actions and results. So I think we need to set clear goals for our DEI efforts. I think we need to hold ourselves accountable to those goals, and we should not be afraid to acknowledge the areas where we have more work to do. As I said, you know, earlier in response to another question, I believe that our schools should be safe and inclusive for every child. Every child needs to have an equal opportunity to succeed in this district, to achieve their potential. And we wanna equip our students to become independent, critical thinkers. And I think in this process, we shouldn't hesitate to actively seek out dissenting views, marginalized views. The whole point of these discussions is to bring the diversity of our community together. Artsley has people of different backgrounds, perspectives. We wanna engage in constructive dialogue to move our district forward.
Thank you. Okay, Victoria?
Yeah, so having served on the DI committee and it continues to serve in the DI committee, I've heard multiple conversations. And I've, you know, listened to multiple viewpoints. And as Rishi points out, we're a super diverse community, and we do have multiple, multiple points of view and perceptives. But what unites us is that we all agree that the DI has to be moved past the conversations. I think we are at the point where we're ready to move the past conversations. And I think one of the things that comes to mind is an immediate, for example, tangible approach to DI is the restorative justice approach. And what that means is that changing the way that we, let's say, punish kids in school. We have, that we address any kind of, any of these issues in a more developmentally oriented and developmentally appropriate ways. And we turn the DI issues into learning opportunities, which is what restorative justice really means if, if, you know, it's done right. And there earlier on, it's done right, the earlier on that approach is taken, we have the, you know, more, more, one of these more tangible outcomes where we can measure how we succeed.
Thank you. Okay, any rebuttals? Okay. Alrighty, next question. We're gonna start with Rishi, and here's the question. What do you think should be the role of social and emotional learning and mental health education in our schools? What do you think should be the role of social and emotional learning and mental health education in our schools?
Sure. So I think there are two components to that, and they're complementary. The first is the environment that our students are in while they're in school. It's important for us to create an environment that reinforces and advances their social and emotional health. So that means understanding the intended and unintended consequences of scheduling, of, you know, the level of rigor, the timelines and demands that we put on students and the, the tools that we give them to manage, you know, the workload, distress, their, their evolution and growth throughout our district. So that's the first component. The second is the tools and the resources that we give them to persevere and to develop resilience for the environment beyond our control. As much as we wanna create, you know, a socially and emotionally healthy environment here, our children are gonna move on to places that may be less accommodating and teaching them the, you know, the strategies and tools and resources to be resilient, to develop, you know, a reserve of resilience that they can tap into so that they can succeed and thrive outside of our environment is equally important.
Thank you. Okay. Victoria, what do you think should be the role of social and emotional learning and mental health education in our schools?
Okay, so as I would separate it a little bit in a different way. I would, but it's very similar. In a way, it's also very similar to what Rishi just said. I would separate it to here and now and also to the future. And to here and now, those are, we need to support and we need to listen to our children. And we need to adjust our approach to what they need in this constantly changing world. We need to have our, you know, our specialized staff, our psychologists trained in the most up-to-date approaches and methods to combat the emotional issues that our children go through while they're developing those intangible skills of organization and learning and ability to deal with stress, stress, and that will prepare them for the future. And so those are the certain things, as I said, we address now. And in the meantime, prepare them for the, to be resilient, to be, to be able to hold stresses. We don't know how many pandemics they're going to go through. We don't know how many more, you know, wars they're gonna have to go through in the future. But they need to individually be able to handle all these things, and we need to instill it in them, you know, at their early age.
Okay, thank you. And Frank?
Yes, there's nothing I've heard that I'd argue with. And I want to know, before we used social, emotional, before we used the terms, I was doing things on the board that were related to what we, we have to do now. When my daughter was in high school, my older daughter, she's up studying at two in the morning. I said, why are you studying at two in the morning? Well, I have four tests tomorrow. Why should that ever be that you have four tests in one day? And it was, believe it or not, it was a struggle. I said, why can't we have a rule that our, absent something compelling, language tests are given on a certain day, social studies tests on another day, science tests on this day, math tests on that day, and you don't have four tests in one day. And it was, it was a several-year struggle, and I, I believe the schools have more or less moved towards that. I, I think that we have to understand our kids are feel the world is closed, that opportunities are closed, and they're very stressed by this. It may be irrational stress, but we have to support them to, to deal with it and and not have it cause them more harm than it needs to. And that's what I worked for.
Sounds, okay, thank you. Any rebuttals? Okay. Next question, starting with Victoria. And we're gonna, some of you are using transparency as a goal in your campaign. What does it mean to you? Victoria?
Okay, so transparency is a very broad term and often politicized. But to me, it means very, very specific things. It's a transparency in communication. It's a meaning, the communication at all levels. Communication by, from the district to the parents, from the parents to the board, from the board, like intercommunication in the community, from the educators to the parents. So that the parents are well aware of what is going on in their children's lives, in their children's curricula, and, and know and be able to voice their concerns if there are any in a timely, timely fashion. And whatever the decisions are being made, whichever the discussions are being held, that has also to be transparent. We cannot, in, in, in the current climate, we really cannot, you know, throw a decision onto the constituency and then claim that there were discussions held. We need to know when the discussions are held. We need to hear the points of view that have been held. And we need to inform the community of what is the outcome, what are the timelines? And we need to inform the community of uh, what is the outcome, what are the timelines and how we plan to proceed. So for me, it's really transparency of actions, transparency uh, of decision-making and transparency, just, just, you know, it's honesty really.
Okay, thank you. And Frank?
Yes, I, I think we've worked very hard to be very transparent. We communicate a lot. At times we're told we communicate too much and people can't follow all the communications that they get from us. I uh, I don't think, and I say this from someone who's been on the inside for decades, that we operate from a conspiracy that we're, we're really doing one thing, we're saying something to the public. That's not us. We are transparent. And you could see at the meetings where people on the board have uh, different shades of how they approach a problem. And uh, I think transparency is, has been a long-term goal. And I think we do pretty well with it.
Thank you. Okay. And um, Rishi?
Sure. So the formal role of a, the formal title of a, a school board member is trustee. The school board trustee is a position of public trust. That's trust that we have to earn and it's trust that we have to maintain. So transparency to me means uh, transparency into not only the process of what we do, but also the substance of what we do. We hire uh, educators and administrators who are experts in education. I think it's important for us to give them uh, the latitude to do their jobs. At the same time, parents are experts in their kids and we want to work for all families and all students in this district. And we need to earn, you know, their trust and confidence, not only uh, that they have an opportunity to speak, but that they are actually being listened to and heard. People that, again, this is a diverse community. People have different points of view, different perspectives, but it's important for us to hear all of those perspectives, build consensus, get buying collectively and hold ourselves accountable, not just in word, but in deed. And that means pointing to outcomes and results and not being afraid to accept criticism and acknowledge mistakes when we make them.
Okay, thank you. Any rebuttals?
I'm gonna add to that. I'm going to say, I'm gonna add to the point of transparency in the hiring process and transparency in the accountability process. Uh, because as Rishi said, uh, we have different uh, points of view in the community, different kids that need different needs. And perhaps if we had more transparency in the way we hold ourselves and, and uh, everybody really who participates in the education accountable, uh, we would achieve better goals.
Great, thank you. Okay. Uh, next question and we're going to start with Frank. Artsley has been awarded funds by the New York State Education Department to establish a pre-K program. Do you plan to pursue pre-K in the district? Frank?
At this point, yes. At this point, the funds that the, that the state allocated and the way that they allocated is we could run it ourselves or we could use existing pre-Ks. They didn't give us enough money to do it in this part of the state. And we had a long discussion of this at the last board meeting. They gave us about half of what it would take. So it, it's difficult to, to run it, run it on that basis. We're going to work with the state to try to get some regional cost went into that. So maybe we could look at it again in the future. But uh, at this point, the state has not given us anything, what's viable to run a pre-K program. So we can't do it.
Okay, and um, Rishi?
So I think, as I said before, you know, it's important for us to live our values. If we believe that uh, every student in this district deserves an opportunity to feed and reach the potential, we need to be willing to have difficult conversations, seek out different perspectives and new information in order to provide that opportunity. I know there are no easy answers. I think, you know, I, I, I tend to think that the more confident you are that you have all the answers, the less likely you are to seek out information that may conflict with uh, your prior convictions. So it's important for us to have those conversations internally so that we understand the needs and resources of the families of our district. It's also important for us to engage our uh, local and state legislators in a constructive way so that they understand not only our needs, but the extent to which uh, you know, the goals that we have align with theirs and are consistent with the message that they're delivering to their constituents who are also the residents of our district. So it's a complex issue. I know we need to sort through both the needs and the resources to meet those needs. Uh, but I think that's a conversation that we should continue.
Okay, and Victoria?
I think pre-K is a very important question, given the uh, you know, the, the lots of hardworking families in the community and it's actually a very big issue for, you know, in terms of convenience and ability to have all the children in the same location. So I think it definitely really needs to be uh, revisited. Um, probably calls for creative solution. If Frank says that there's not enough money, then uh, we need to, you know, think about other sources of funding. Advocacy certainly at the uh, state level um, is something to consider. Uh, perhaps grants uh, at the beginning and then we're, you know, working our way for more funding. But I definitely think it's an issue that needs to be considered seriously because, you know, we represent the families in the community and it's, it's, it's a very important, pre, pre-K itself is a very important, it's a start of education for a lot of kids and a start of school system for a lot of families and it really needs to be given the proper attention to.
Thank you. Okay. Um, I do have one more question, so I'm going to start with uh, Rishi. And this is going to be it. Okay. Please speak on the importance of benchmarking to other comparative districts in our area and what metrics you use to assess the district's performance relative to its mission. College admissions, literacy or graduation rates, standardized test scores, national or regional rankings, et cetera.
So I think that we should not be afraid to seek out as many data points as possible. I, I understand that, you know, school rankings and uh, test scores and admission rates are not the end-all be-all of the opportunities that we provide to people in this district. At the same time, the families that moved to Artsley for the schools and for the education have a reasonable expectation that we're not just going to pay lip service to those objectives, but that we're actually going to meet them, measure them and hold ourselves accountable. So I think that having as many information, uh, sources of information, as much data as possible uh, is only helpful to us. It's very easy for us to say, you know, to look at a, a neighboring district and say, well, they're different. We shouldn't, you know, be measuring ourselves based on the same thing they're doing. I totally understand that. I don't think the point is for us to be something that we're not. I think the point of looking at what other districts are doing is to learn from what our peers are doing, adapt their uh, you know, their programming, their priorities to our district and to what makes sense for us. But holding ourselves accountable means, you know, borrowing other ideas. Nobody has a monopoly on good ideas. So if other districts are doing things that we could benefit from, borrow and learn from, we should be taking every opportunity to do that.
Okay, Victoria?
Yeah, I'm all for a benchmark comparison, particularly uh, with the districts that are neighboring to us. We pretty much spend the same amount of money per student and there's no reason that we should not be able to offer our students uh, anything that any other district is offering. I think that the benchmarks are important because yes, the test scores are not everything and you know, the, the, the grades are not everything, but they are to extend a mark, right? We need to have some kind of measure and that's a measure. But we also can measure other areas of success. For example, in our high school, we have an excellent science research program. We can measure the success of the program. We can measure uh, where our kids from that program go. We can focus our uh, you know, our, our uh, efforts on expanding programs like this to elevate our children to higher level. And college admissions are a marker of success, you know, to a degree again. Uh, and we have to be cognizant of that, but we also have to be cognizant that that's a very real marker, uh, very tangible market that we can measure. And there's no reason that our kids cannot get to the same level of college admissions as the neighboring districts do and uh, to, to remain competitive.
Thank you. Okay, and Frank?
Well, we benchmark a lot of things. We do look at the state tests, although I have my problems with the state tests. I've always said there, there, that, that I can't rely on the state to give us a test that's relevant and consistent and appropriate three years in a row in any subject. The tests are politi, I believe are politically manipulated from time to time. I, I look at our college admissions. I look, we do look at what other districts do. Our, our administration is in constant communication and practices are shared. I, I've always felt one of the most important benchmarks that we've done, and we only do it from time to time, is we've hired outside polling organizations to interview our graduates several years after graduation and say, what could we have done better and how did we do? And to me, that, that, to me, in my heart of hearts, that's the most important benchmark. That, that's what I have to say on that one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any rebuttals to any of that? No?
I'll just add to that, that um, yeah, if, if this is indeed what happened, what's happening, I have not really seen the communications from the district regarding that. It would be nice to hear what our graduates have to say and what we have done, uh, you know, in order to implement, implement whatever they have suggested in the spirit of transparency again and accountability.
In part, the research program came out of that because they said we didn't learn how to do research. And the other thing they said is we didn't get enough practice presenting in front of a class. And we changed things to accommodate that and to make that more a part of the curriculum.
So it's great practice and we should continue it.
Okay. All right, listen, let's move on to closing statements. And so since we started with Victoria and moved up from P to K to H, we're going to start with H and go to K and go to P. So Frank, closing statement?
One minute, hold on. Okay, how many, what's the timing? One minute, minute and a half?
What is it?
The closing statements are one minute.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, everyone for listening. I want you to know, I'll be walking the district to speak to people. Uh, I'll knock on hundreds of doors and I'll be asking everyone to ask me or tell me anything they want about our schools. I really want to talk to everyone and I'll do it to the extent I can. I know that some of you have different perspectives than I do on a lot of issues and that's fine. We're all neighbors and we're engaged together in this wonderful educational adventure. I will not avoid knocking on a door because the person living there might have different views than I do. I want to hear everyone. We have three people running for two seats. My, my opponents are both sincere and dedicated people. I can serve with either of them to help move this district forward. And I'm not running against either of them. I'm running with them and I, I, I hope that everyone's happy with the choices that they make. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now, um, Rishi?
Uh, thank you to everyone who was able to join us tonight. So since I make my living in the sports world, I, I like to think of this role as being part of a team. The most effective teams not only have strong individual players, but ones who work well together to make a team versatile and well-rounded. At this moment, our community is going through a number of evolutions technologically, environmentally, economically and culturally. Give our students the best chance to succeed. We need leaders who are connected to those shifting currents, who can communicate a clear vision for the future, who can find creative solutions to complex challenges and who can build consensus around a range of stakeholders. I think my track record of doing those things makes me the right person for this role at this time. As with any team goal, the job of educating, our children requires us to marshal our collective talents and resources. I'd like to do my part to help lead that team and I hope to earn your vote on May 17th. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and Victoria?
I would like to say that as an immigrant, the experience of fitting and building a successful life in a different culture and society has taught me, taught me a lot about self-awareness awareness and how crucial it is to see the world through the eyes of those different from you. As stated at the beginning, I really believe that um, you know, a key tenet of a successful board member is incorporating all points of view and advocating for all families and all students and hearing them and uh, also working as a collaborative team uh, on the board. I am um, a collaborative decision-maker. I'm not afraid to make the decision, but I require a lot of input. Uh, and as far as uh, my own personal um, view on the education, my husband and I owe, owe a significant portion of our success to educators who supported us and mentored us along the way. And we have a deep understanding of the power of solid education and a meaningful commitment to making sure it continue to thrive in Artsley. Um, I thank you, everybody who tuned in. I am looking forward for people coming out and voting because your vote does count and your voice certainly must be heard.
Thank you.
And I can assure you that I will serve your interests on the board.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the candidates um, and remind everyone that is seeing this, that this forum was recorded. A link will be available both on the school district website and the Artsley. Um, I don't know actually if that's true, but it's going to be on the league's website for uh, for.
We've conditioned, we put it up on ours.
Okay.
Goes up on ours too.
Okay, great. Um, I'd like to remind everyone of the unique and important role of the League of Women Voters, both here in this community and all across the country. The League works to register voters, educate voters on the issues of the day and is currently working to protect many rights of individuals to continue to be able to vote in this country. Uh, your local league is made up of volunteers who devote their time and energy to this effort. Your participation and assistance is always welcome. Remember that democracy is not a spectator sport, which is actually a true league slogan. The election and budget vote is Tuesday, May 17th. Polls are open from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM and I encourage everyone to vote. Thank you very much and have a great evening.